Everybody, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Welcome to the June 25, 2024 Huntington Beach Planning Commission meeting. While the Planning Commission welcomes public involvement and free speech, it rejects comments from anyone that are discriminatory, defamatory, or otherwise not protected speech. Those comments will not inform nor be considered by the Planning Commission and may be cause for the Chair to interrupt the speaker. Such comments will not be consented to or otherwise adopted by the Planning Commission in its discussions and findings for any other matter. Thank you. If we could get everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, Vice Commissioner Kennedy will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have the roll call, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Pellman. Vice Chair Kennedy.
Here.
Chair Twining.
Here.
Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Here.
And Commissioner Acosta-Galván is absent, and we do have a quorum.
Thank you. Now's the time for public comments. For items that are not on the agenda this evening, do we have any public comments?
We have no one signed up to speak for items that are not on the agenda.
Thank you. Next are the public hearing items. We have zoning map amendment number 24005, the Mapping Consistency Cleanup Project Residential Zones. Planning Commissioners, if you could, state your disclosures regarding this item. We'll start with Commissioner Adams.
No disclosures.
I spoke with staff.
No disclosures. I spoke with staff, too.
I spoke to Ricky Ramos earlier today.
No disclosures.
Staff, may we have the presentation, please?
Yes, Madeline Welch will give the presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight's item is zoning map amendment regarding certain sites that have a residential general plan designation. So to begin, staff has identified 30 parcels which have zoning designations that are inconsistent with the general plan. So with that, the request tonight is to amend the current zoning designation of such parcels to bring them into conformance with the general plan designation of residential. The general plan is a comprehensive blueprint which provides a framework for the utilization and management of the city's physical and economic resource and guides decisions regarding land use in the city through the year 2040. State law requires that every city to adopt a general plan and requires zoning ordinance to be in compliance with it. The zoning map and ordinance are both tools that implement the general plan's land use element. So this amendment is prompted to fix inconsistencies between the current zoning and general plan designations. The amendment would change the zoning of the parcel in tonight's request to the residential designation that is consistent with its existing general plan designation. Staff has evaluated the affected parcels and determined that most of the proposed zones will be compatible with the existing uses on site and with the zoning in the surrounding area. The existing uses on some of the parcels will remain nonconforming with this DMA. However, the zoning for the site itself will become in compliance with the general plan. 4,436 notices were sent out to properties within 500 feet of each subject site. Notices were sent via certified mail to the property owners of each subject site. Staff did receive one request to opt out, and that example has been removed in tonight's presentation, leaving tonight's request a total of 28 parcels. So here is a map demonstrating the existing zoning for the parcels that are included in tonight's request. We do also have physical maps here in the chambers tonight. This is the amended zoning map, and now I will go through each example. So the first example is a drive aisle which leads to an entrance of a neighborhood off of 11th Street, just south of Main Street. It is owned by the Crystal Island Estates Home Owners Association. So the existing zoning for this parcel is open space, and the general plan existing designation is low-density residential. So the amendment would change that drive aisle entrance to low-density residential to match the general plan and be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood in which it serves. Our second example is a commercial office building. This is located off of 17th Street, just north of Olive Avenue. This example includes one parcel, and the existing zoning designation is general commercial with a general plan designation of residential medium-high density. So the amendment would change the zoning designation to residential medium-high density with the small-lot sub-district to match the general plan of residential medium-high density. Our third example includes two sites that are across the street from each other. One is a site is developed as a single-family residence as well as a liquor store, and the other site is a multi-tenant commercial building. Both of these parcels, they're both located south of Orange Avenue along 11th Street. Both of these parcels are zoned general commercial with a general plan designation of residential medium-high density. So this amendment would change that designation to match the surrounding area and the general plan. So the new zoning designation would be residential medium-high density with small-lot sub-district. The fourth example tonight are six properties located along Main Street. They are developed as single-family residential properties. These six single-family homes are currently zoned general commercial with a general plan designation of residential medium-high density. The map amendment would change the designation to residential medium-high density, small-lot sub-district, to match the surrounding areas and to match the general plan. Our fifth example is another single-family residence. This property is located off of Utica Street, just west of Beach Boulevard. The site is developed as a single-family, and the existing zoning is general commercial. The general plan designation is medium-density residential. So this amendment tonight would change that designation to residential medium-density residential to match a general plan. The next example is another single-family residence. This includes a few of the, a few single-family residential properties along Roan Lane. Currently, the back portion of these lots are zoned medium-high-density residential. The front portion is zoned low-density residential, so they are dual-zoned, but they are developed as single-family, and the general plan has the sites designated as single-family. So this amendment would eliminate that back portion of those lots, so the entire parcel would be zoned single-family residential to match a general plan. Our next example is a medical office located off of Adams Avenue, just east of Magnolia. And again, the site is developed as a medical office, and the existing zone is commercial office. The general plan designation is low-density residential. So the amendment would change that designation to low-density residential to match a general plan. Our next example is another medical office building. This is located off of Newman Avenue, just east of Beach Boulevard. The existing zoning designation is commercial office with a general plan designation of medium-high-density residential. So the amendment would change that zone to medium-high-density residential to match a general plan. And then the next example that we have are more medical office buildings. These are located off of Bolsochico Street, just across the street from each other. This is south of Edinger. Both properties are zoned commercial office with a general plan designation of medium-density residential. And the amendment would change the zone of the sites to medium-density residential to match the general plan. Our next example is a dentist office. This is located off of Edinger Avenue, including one parcel. The existing zoning designation is commercial office with a general plan designation of medium-density residential. So this amendment would change that to medium-density residential to match a general plan. And then this is our last example. This is an open-space area for an existing multifamily development. This is just south of Atlanta Avenue, east of Beach Boulevard. So this is just including the southern portion of this development. It is already developed as multifamily, and the parcel that we are looking at today is the common open space and recreational area for the development. The zoning designation is residential agriculture, and the general plan is residential medium-high density. So the amendment would change that zone to residential medium-high density to match the rest of the development. And so based off of that, staff recommends approval, based on the following, that the zoning map amendment is consistent with the general plan. It's necessary in order to comply with Government Code Section 65860. The proposed amendments will address nonconformities and bring the parcels into compliance with the general plan. There are some sites that will remain, the use, the existing use may remain nonconforming, but the zoning will be in compliance with the general plan and that the request is exempt from CEQA. So with that, I will conclude my presentation. I do want to note, staff received 10 inquiries tonight regarding the request. We did attach some correspondence that we received tonight as attachments 6 and 7, and we did receive contact from five of the property owners in tonight's request. And then again, one of the property owners did opt out, and so that was removed from the presentation tonight. Thank you.
Chair and Commissioners, I wanted to add, too, that in the last six months, we processed six phases of the zoning cleanups. And I wanted to mention that this time around, that the cleanups that we've been processing basically involve more of a global cleanup, meaning that some of the sites where the zoning doesn't match general plan that we're cleaning up predates the 2017 general plan update. And this is in contrast with a prior approach. Just for instance, with the 1996 general plan update, we did some zoning cleanup with that as well. But in that case, it was more targeted towards the sites that were changed, that had the general plan designation changed. And so we followed up with amending the zoning to match general plan, but again, only on the sites that had the general plan changed. And then the other thing I wanted to mention, too, is most of the parcels that we presented to you are typically either developed or they have a land use on it. And so with the zoning cleanup, most likely those uses will remain, meaning they are not forced out. They can continue to operate. And if in the future, the property owner chooses to do something new with that property, then at that point, they'll have to adhere to the requirements of the current general plan and zoning, and then they don't have to do a zoning map amendment anymore because the zoning would have matched the general plan. So hopefully, that provides you a little bit more information.
Thank you, Ms. Welsh and Mr. Ramos. At this time, I'd like to ask the Commissioners if they have any questions. So we'll start with Ian.
Thank you, Chair. So to question, anyone you can answer. If these designation, if the zoning is approved to match the general plan, but the existing business, let's say it's a non-residential dentist or some of those non, if they wanted to come in and do something for their existing business, like a big, major retrofit or an expansion or, you know, some fairly substantial improvement, is there any restriction that would be imposed on them because they're no longer matching, you know what I mean? Their nonconforming use would now be hurt by this?
So they are existing nonconforming, so those restrictions already apply to the property. But yes, they are limited on what they can do with the site because they are nonconforming.
And that, that nonconforming status already exists today. We're not, we're not adding that nonconforming, right? Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Kennedy?
Your name's not on here. Oh, okay.
Your name's not on here.
Oh, I didn't know you were using it this time. Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to thank Mr. Ramos and Ms. Welsh. I, when I, last October, when all these 141 parcels came to the Planning Commission, I had a question because it was more like, I don't want to repeat having nonconforming zoning and all that stuff. And so I, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Welsh for being comprehensive in her review of all the properties and parcels and all of that. And that was explained to me, and Mr. Ramos made the comment about it being a global effort this time instead of targeted. And targeted meaning that it was not every parcel in Huntington Beach. So I wanted to thank you, Mr. Ramos, for that explanation and providing it tonight. And it made, it made it very clear to me why some of these things weren't previously addressed and why this Planning Commission was given 141 all at once. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pellman. Commissioner Kennedy?
Thank you, Chairman. Just a couple of questions on item 2 and item 7, or excuse me, item 5. You used the term "small lot," I think you said "sub-district." Or can you explain that, please?
Yes, so in the RMH designation, it, it's for medium-high-density residential. However, it depends on the lot width. So the small lots downtown that are 25 feet wide, they're all zoned medium-high-density, but they have that sub-district A, which means single-family. So the, it depends on the lot width. If it's 25 feet wide, it allows for one unit.
Okay, thank you. And on item 7, that's that dentist office over there behind Don Jose's, kind of along the lines of what Ian was talking about. So when we had that St. Simon and Jude property come up, the little strip, you had referenced the fact that there was going to be a zone change, but there was an underlying use that, somebody made reference that if somebody was to buy that property, there was a potential to revitalize the underlying use, if that's my recollection. If I'm correct, can you re-explain that, the underlying?
Yes, so that, the underlying designations only apply to the general plan designation of public, semi-public.
Okay.
And so churches and schools typically have that underlying. But that doesn't mean that they can redevelop it to that. They would still need to go through this process to change the zone and general plan.
Got it, thank you. And then just one last thing, and thank you, Mr. Papajon, last, last time. But just, just to be on the record, prior to the passage of, I believe it's AB 821, we were not required to match the zoning changes as a charter city with less than 2 million people, and that was law. It did change, and it did see that. But, you know, all those years that you were making those statements that it was basically mandated by law, it was a little disingenuous. So I just wanted to be on the record as saying, I said it before, but I'll probably say it at every meeting, we can't have that. You guys either knew better and overlooked it, or you should have known better, one or the other. So with that said, I'll make another comment later regarding a petition that was filed, so along those lines. We need better transparency, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Chair Twining, and thank you, Ms. Welsh, for the presentation. I have a question for Mr. Ramos. I think you kind of touched upon it a little bit, but in some of the properties that were, for example, general commercial, and they have a, they were, they're being switched off because of the zoning text amendment through the general plan. If that property owner, let's say, because we did have one that opted out, right? That property owner wants to come back later on, sells the property, the new, either a developer or whoever it is, wants that property zoned residential medium-density, will they have to go through this process again? Come back to the Planning Commission, pay additional fees? Yeah?
Yeah, that's correct, yes. So if that individual property owner were to decide that they wanted to clean up the zoning at some point in the future, then they would have to apply on their own and pay a fee.
And that fee is about, what, 7,000?
It's tens of thousands of dollars.
$47,000.
Quite a bit of money.
$47,000. So this property owner that's opting out in the future may, or maybe not because he may own it forever, right? So, okay, thank you. I just want to make it clear, you know.
You would also need to hire a consultant team to help you with that process, and they're an extra on top of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez. Anybody else? Oh, okay, Commissioner Pellman?
I had a thought about, many of our meetings talk, speak to the topic of transparency, and I had an idea that if we could add a QR code to the flyers that are sent out, then they would have direct access to whatever information you would want them to see. It would be, I think, a better form of communication, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commissioners? All right. With no further questions, we'll now open to a public hearing. Do we have any speakers tonight?
We have two people signed up to speak. If you would like to speak and you have not signed up, there are speaker forms at the front of the chambers. George Berg and Norm Kramer, please come down to the podiums.
I'm George Berg. I'm in agreement with it, so I have nothing to do with it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tell me those stairs are dangerous. Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak. I'm Norm Kramer. I live on Spa Drive. For the last 40 years of my life, I've been an environmental consultant. Done it all. I don't want to bore you with that. My concern is when I read your proposals and what I saw online, is you have significant properties that are RROW, railroad right-of-ways, okay? These are environmental nightmares. They have a history of it. They're just below. Oh, sorry. They're just below El Toro and Tustin Air Station, which are NPL sites. Not by much. Most of these railroads, rail reliance, especially in Huntington Beach, which was founded on oil, has significant contamination. And I live off of Spa Drive, which on your designation is aeronautics. Not only does it have the oil, but it has whatever they were, military wanted to put into Seal Beach Naval Weapons Station. Some of it was radioactive, and that I know. They also were butted up against McDonnell Douglas, an aerospace contractor which used, shall we say, significant hazardous materials, including heavy metals, okay, including hex chrome. They also used beryllium, which is a known carcinogen. What I'm requesting at this point is that you maybe want to consider changing your designation from public to open-space park. This is what I researched and found out that the city of Westminster is doing, okay? Makes it a lot easier and a hell of a lot cheaper. All you got to do is throw some grass down, and you're done. But if you don't choose to do that, any development, any monitoring, any disturbance of that soil will require an environmental impact study. And based on the history, it's going to get very, very pricey. And please remember that we are very close to the ocean. So groundwater is 20 feet below us, 30 feet below us. And the state of California says that all groundwater, all water in the state of California is potential drinking water. So we may impact that, and any testing you do will have to go down to that depth. You're talking millions of dollars in testing. And remember, you're paying prevailing wage. You're paying four to five times the going rate to do all this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have no one else, no one else signed up to speak.
Thank you very much. Okay, Planning Commissioners, now's your time to deliberate. Would anybody like to speak? I don't know. I, I think, you know, Chairman would like to just ask a couple of questions based on our last speaker. That's the first I've heard. I've heard of Spa Drive, and I've seen it on, on some of our rezoning documents, I believe. Whereabouts is that? Is that over in north Huntington Beach? North of Boeing? Okay. Right, right. Is any of the Planning Department aware of, aware of issues out there? Has it ever been brought up? Any issues?
Not, not along those lines, but the comments are not surprising. But I think it's in reference to perhaps the zoning cleanup that we looked at at the May meeting that had the railroad right-of-way that the Commission continued indefinitely that we're going to try and bring back at the end of July.
And right now, what I was referring to the other day when I was talking with you as the Monarch Trail, is that the area that this gentleman's speaking of?
It sounds like it, yes.
And what is it presently zoned as? Isn't it light industrial?
IG, so general industrial, yeah.
Okay, general industrial. All right. Well, we're going to maybe take a look at that after this meeting's over with. Thank you. Let's see. Me, at this point in time, I think it's time to, if we have a motion to approve the zoning redo, and that's item number, well, ZMA 24-005. Is there any motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve zoning map amendment number 24-005.
I'll second.
Call for the vote?
We have all ayes. Commissioner Acosta-Galván is absent. Motion carries.
The Planning Commission's action on this item will be forwarded to the City Council.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit number 24-006, Coach's Lounge Alcohol and Live Entertainment. Is there a staff report on that?
Chair, we want to do the Planning Commission disclosures first.
Oh, excuse me. Say that again, Mr. Ramos?
We want to, we want to start with the Planning Commission disclosures.
Any disclosures on the Coach's application?
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
None.
None.
No disclosures.
No disclosures.
Thank you. All right. Now, does staff have a report on this item?
Ms. Hayden Beckman will be giving the presentation.
Thank you, Ricky, and good evening, Honorable Chair and fellow Commissioners. Tonight, this, I'm presenting an application for CUP number 24006. And this is a project that is located at 8911 Adams Avenue. The project site is a vacant 7,000-square-foot commercial tenant space located within an existing commercial center at the northwest corner of Adams Avenue and Magnolia Street. The commercial center is comprised of several parcels with separate ownership that occupy the site, and it contains a single attached commercial building totaling approximately 17,000 square feet and a parking area with 123 parking spaces. The subject property is currently zoned and general plan designated as The subject property is currently zoned and general plan designated as CG for commercial general. The surrounding uses to the north include RL residential low density. To the south across Adams Avenue is also residential low density and commercial. And on both sides to the east and west across Magnolia Street is commercial general. The subject request for a conditional use permit is for the establishment and operation of an eating and drinking establishment that specifically includes live entertainment and dancing, as well as ancillary sales, service, and consumption of alcoholic beverages under an ABC Type 47 license. This would permit the onsite sale and consumption of beer, wine, and spirits. The live entertainment component includes live bands up to four members, a DJ, karaoke, painting activities, and the previously mentioned dancing. According to the applicant's narrative, the intent for the eating and drinking establishment is to operate generally as a restaurant and lounge with an ancillary bar. The facility will also be able to host special events such as small weddings and other private events that provides guests with live entertainment and dancing. The requested hours for general operation and the provision of live entertainment and dancing are identical and are currently proposed to be Monday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., from Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 1:30, and Sunday from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. On the screen is a copy of the proposed floor plan. The primary guest entrance is located on the right-hand side, which faces south towards Adams Avenue and leads directly into the primary dining and service area. A stage for live entertainment and a 196-square-foot dance floor are highlighted in blue and red and are centrally located along the eastern wall. And the back-of-house areas that include the kitchen and service, storage, and office and restrooms are highlighted in yellow. An employee exit is also located on the rear facing the existing alley on the northern property line. The HBZSO permits eating and drinking establishments by right in the commercial general zone. And these uses, any use that is proposed to include dancing is then subject to the review and approval of a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission. Ancillary alcohol service in conjunction with eating and drinking uses have not previously been approved on this site, and the request for an ABC license is therefore included in the CUP. As I mentioned earlier, there are 123 available onsite parking spaces. The other commercial tenant space is currently occupied by an adult care facility that was entitled through a CUP in 2021. That address is 8909 Adams. This is a 10,000-square-foot facility and was entitled to require 45 total parking spaces. The subject request is a 7,000-square-foot restaurant, which would generate a parking requirement of 70 spaces. And additionally, per the ZSO, 196-square-foot dance floor would require an additional four parking spaces. Therefore, the total parking demand for both uses on the subject site is a total of 119 out of the available 123. The Police Department has also reviewed the plans and proposal and are recommending conditions for the CUP in order to minimize problematic occurrences that could result for businesses that combine elements of live entertainment and alcohol. The Police Department has also issued a conceptual entertainment permit, which further managed live entertainment activities. Some conditions of the entertainment permit include closing the exterior doors and windows anytime during live entertainment and terminating entertainment at least 30 minutes before closing. The Police Chief maintains the authority to suspend or revoke the required entertainment permit should any violation of the conditions or any detrimental impacts occur. Staff considers the suggested conditions of approval of the CUP as well as the conceptual entertainment permit to adequately mitigate any potential safety concerns. This use will be required to comply with operational conditions of approval that assure that any impacts are minimized. The site is not anticipated to generate noise, safety, or compatibility issues. The live entertainment and dancing will occur entirely within the interior of the restaurant space. And the request to permit the establishment of live entertainment and dancing in the restaurant is consistent with the scope and the intent of general commercial zoning designation, as well as supported by the goals and policies of the general plan. As such, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit number 24006 with suggested findings and conditions of approval. And as a final note, staff did not receive any phone calls or written correspondence in accordance with the public notification for this request. That concludes my presentation, and the applicant is also available should there be any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions? Anybody? Oh, Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Hayden. How many notices were sent out?
Off the top of my head, I'm not aware. I believe the number is between 150 and 175, thereabouts.
Is there a perimeter that, you know, typically there's a, you know, a measure where you fall within?
Yes, so for a conditional use permit, the radius is 500 feet from the subject property.
The neighborhood behind them?
Yes.
Received?
Yes.
Is that it? Are you, no, Commissioner Kennedy, you through? Okay, I think he is. Commissioner Pellman.
Yes, the conditional use permit I found to be very thorough, as well as the conceptual use permit. And I just wanted to ask, all places that have alcoholic beverages go through a CUP, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pellman. I have one question. What are the operating hours of the bar/restaurant?
I'll go back to that slide, just for everybody's reference. The conditions of, the recommended conditions of approval, as well as the hours that have been conceptually approved by PD through the entertainment permit, would be Monday through Thursday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Friday to Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:30 a.m., and then Sunday operating hours would be 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Beckman. Okay. With no further questions, we'll now open up to public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have one speaker, Murat Coach Coke. Please come down.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Murat Coach, aka Coach. I own Coach's Mediterranean Grill on Main Street for 32 years, and also Coach's Deli on Main Street. An upcoming new restaurant, Coach's Lounge on Magnolia and Adams. I'm here to answer any questions.
Well, commissioners, would you like to, does anybody have any questions they'd like to ask Coach? Commissioner Rodriguez.
I don't have a question. I'd just like to thank staff for the thorough presentation. I thought all my questions and concerns that I had regarding PD, timing, outreach to local community have been answered. So, like I said, I don't have any objection, and so if appropriate, I'd like to move the item, so.
Okay, we have one more, one more comment.
We do need to close the public hearing prior to making any motions.
Looks like everybody's asked their questions at this point in time. Now, there may be another one coming up, but we need to close the public hearing first.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Any more speakers? Is that it? Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Kennedy. All right. Commissioner Pellman.
I just wanted to say it was very thorough. I had, reading through all of the documents made it very clear, and thank you for that.
Okay, if there's no further questions by anybody, let's move this item. Does anybody have a motion to?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve agenda item 24-454, conditional use permit number 24006, Coach's Lounge Alcohol and Live Entertainment.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a second. Can we have the vote?
We have all ayes. Commissioner Costa Galván is absent. Motion carries.
The Planning Commission's action on this item is appealable to the City Council within 10 calendar days. An appeal must include the reasons for the appeal, any required fee, and shall be filed with the City Clerk's Office within 10 calendar days.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar, and there also is a set of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
I'll move approval of the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Call for the vote.
We have five ayes. Commissioner Costa Galván is absent. Commissioner Rodriguez abstains. Motion carries.
Okay, with no planning items this evening, before we close for the evening, planning commissioners, do you have any comments to provide? We'll start with Commissioner Rodriguez.
No major discussions, just, I've been attending the design review board meetings, and most of the topics that we've discussed include single-family homes. Some of the items were continued and were brought back to the design review board. So for the most part, it's just been very mellow, and I wanted to ensure that the rest of the Commission had that update. But no major issues going on or anything of concern to the Planning Commission, so, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez.
I don't have anything this evening, thank you.
Commissioner Kennedy.
Thank you, Chairman. It's a small audience here, but I just want to say, well, this is really for the Community Development Department. I mean, normally, there's a few more people there, but clearly, you know, transparency, I'm big on transparency. Transparency works. We stayed the original vote on 142 at the request of the Commission. He broke it into subsets. We appreciate that. And I can tell you, like, the most consequential part of this vote tonight was the houses on Main Street. So that gave them the opportunity to come to grips and actually support the change. But that was done because they were actually given the proper time to understand the ramifications or the positives. So, you know, transparency works, and that's kind of a segue into, there was an appeal filed on an upcoming agenda item that we'll be visiting regarding the maintenance operation in the school bus thing. And based on some commentary I've received from some concerned citizens, it seems as if the zoning administrator, and again, this is just based on one side of commentary, we'll see this as the public gets to voice their opinions. But it doesn't feel like there was a lot of transparency. It seems like some of the milestones or requirements may have been omitted or passed through regarding the DSA and other parts of actually meeting their requirements to move the item forward, so therefore the appeal was filed. But just want to make sure that, you know, the community development understands that your customer, our customer, is the resident, not the builder, not the developer. So I just really want to make sure that you guys understand, and this is speaking to anybody who has any frame of reference or responsibility, that every checkbox is checked off and every aspect that needs to be handled is handled. So I would really, I'm hoping that they can't prove their case that there was a lot of omissions, because their position is there was some material omissions, and we'll see that when it comes forth. But with that said, I really want you to know, maybe the previous planning commissions were laissez-faire. You know, I can only be a voice of one, but I can assure you, I will be checking every aspect of what is required from your department and making sure you're held accountable to do your jobs properly, which I'll commend you when you do it right, and I'll hold you accountable when you don't. So please just make sure that as these items move forward, we represent the city of Huntington Beach, not the money that's paying. So just make sure the boxes are checked. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. And to echo or add on just a little bit to what, you know, Commissioner Kennedy said, there's this HB-CSD applications for a couple of projects have given us, caused a, you know, question if it went through the right channels and everything. There happen to be residents out there that think it was done really wrong. And they typically call me and they call Vice Commissioner Kennedy, I guess just because we have that title. And somehow they get our phone numbers and they call us, and we have gone out there and looked. I was actually out there this morning at the new maintenance and operations facility. So, you know, we're looking forward to hearing, you know, up here on the Planning Commission, because as you know, I believe they've both been appealed, and so they will come this way, and we look forward to finding out what the actual facts are. Thank you. But one other thing, you guys do a great job, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Again, I wanted to thank staff. It was, the information provided, I know I said this earlier, but I really appreciated the thoroughness, and keep it up, okay? Thank you.
All right. If no, there's no further, God, you don't come up on my screen.
Similar comment, yeah, appreciate, again, it's all been covered, but appreciate the extra effort, splitting it all up, bringing it here in smaller packages. It was easier to understand, certainly got a better thorough understanding of the number of different types of land uses that need to be updated or corrected. So appreciate staff's effort.
You know what? All the credit goes to Madeline.
I was about to say that, but you're here, so I'm kidding.
The word on.
Mr. Ramos.
Okay, there's one more, one more comment from Commissioner Pellman.
How many more parcels slash properties do we still have to go through?
Well, we only have the Phase Four, which we looked at at the May meeting. That's the one that involved utilities that had some controversy that the Commission continued. And we're going to try and bring that back at the second meeting in July.
Okay, thank you for clarification. Thank you.
My final comment? If you can get IT in here to work on these computers, because nobody ever comes up on, well, not never, but a lot of times it just says no speakers, and then I'm about ready to stop, and everybody's going, hey, hey! So anyway, we can check the electronics on that. That'd be great. Okay, if no further comments, we are hereby adjourned to the next Planning Commission meeting on July 9, 2024.
Sorry, just for planning, sorry, Mr. Twining. Is the chamber hall going under construction in August, and will we be down all of August? Is that accurate?
Correct, yep.
Okay, just planning vacations.
I'm going to start making you guys hold your hands up and start waving. Okay, if there is no more comments tonight, the July, June 25, 2024...